Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the City of Southfield City Council being conducted via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Banks.
Present.
Brightwell.
Here.
Amanda Obama. Morris. Taylor.
Here.
And Cruz.
Present.
Madam President, we do excuse Councilman Hoskins, who just advised me he couldn't get in. He's having some technical difficulties. And Councilman Amanda Obama, we do have a quorum this evening. Thank you very much. Councilman Cruz, would you please say the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
Yes, Madam President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we will have presentations. And first, we have joining us our own state representative Kyra Harris Bolden. Representative Bolden, are you on the line?
Yes, and good evening to this honorable body, Madam Clerk, and to our mayor. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you tonight. It is my intent to just do a quarterly update, as I know some people aren't able to come to the virtual coffee hours that I hold jointly with Senator Moss, so just want to keep everyone updated. I am proud to announce that I'll be serving as House Democratic Assistant Leader for this term, so I'll be continuing my role in leadership with the House Democrats. And I was assigned to the Insurance Committee, Judiciary Committee, and I'm the Democratic Vice Chair of the Joint Committee on Administrative Rules. As we know, our governor just had a State of the State where she outlined a number of initiatives that she would like to get done. I do want to let everyone know, we did vote on a coronavirus pandemic relief package. I did vote no on that package of bills that would grant relief to the two constituents for coronavirus, because what was in the bill was about $2.5 billion, and the federal government actually appropriated $5 billion to Michigan of our own tax dollars. And we should be using, in my opinion, every single dollar to help the constituents through this crisis. We shouldn't leave any money on the table. So I voted no, and I hope that this creates negotiation space, so that we can use every single dollar that the federal government has appropriated to us. I know that our local municipalities need it. We need it for vaccine distribution. We need it for our local businesses. And I know I don't need to tell the folks on this call anymore about that. But if there are any questions about that, I would be happy to explain kind of the different proposals, what our proposals were. And also, I'm sure, as you know, there's a great pushback from the schools that really need that money in order to make our schools safe to reopen. I want to update this body on our UIA claims, so our unemployment claims. We have actually helped 610 people with unemployment through our office. We have about 54 claims that are unresolved for various reasons, technical glitches, flagged for fraud, different reasons. But the vast majority of constituents of this district have been helped with their unemployment claims, and we're plugging away to make sure every single one is resolved. An easy resource that we passed, I believe it was last term, if you need any help with food assistance or energy assistance from the state, you can dial on your phone 211. So it's a comprehensive directory where you can get resources if you don't know where to turn otherwise. Just want to highlight that there is a Michigan COVID Alert app that you can put on your phone that will alert you if you have come into contact with someone that is COVID positive. Did also just want to highlight that last term, it kind of squeaked out in lame duck, I was able to get my third bill passed into law, which was the Address Confidentiality Program Bill Package, which will help victims of domestic violence, of sexual assaults, and human trafficking by keeping their address confidential, because we know that addresses a public record, especially when we're talking about voting and various aspects. And I was glad to get my third bill passed into law at the end of the session. And I will continue to work hard to make sure we're passing meaningful legislation on behalf of the constituents of this district and the residents of the state of Michigan. AK Founder's Day was January 15th, 2021, and we did designate that as Alpha Kappa Alpha Incorporated Founder's Day in the state of Michigan. And I'm going to continue my work in criminal justice reform, as well as I was appointed to the Elder Abuse Task Force. And so we will have a heavy focus on making sure that our seniors are well taken care of in my office. Last but not least, for my updates, Happy Black History Month, everyone. And we are making history as we sit before us. Money Geek Magazine deemed Southfield the number one best place for black women. And I am proud to be a resident of the city of Southfield. We usually have, my office usually has coffee hours every third Monday. However, because President's Day falls on the third Monday, we'll be having our next coffee hour virtually on February 22nd at 5:00 p.m., and it will be joint with Senator Jeremy Moss, as usual. We're also going to have a COVID Town Hall on March 26th at 5:30, so we can update everyone on the current state of coronavirus in our district. I just want to share my contact information. If you want to sign up for my newsletter, please go to housedemms.com/bolden. You can email my office, kyra, K-Y-R-A, bolden, B-O-L-D-N, at house.mi.gov, or you can call my office at 517-373-1788. Please sign up for the newsletter if you wish to attend the online events. Or you can follow me on social media at @kyraHBolden, and I'll have the links available to you. And so thank you again for allowing me to, and maybe some liberties, to update you tonight. I appreciate our partnership and all the work that we do. And thank you to this honorable body again for letting me speak tonight.
Of course, we will. You're one of Southfield's own. You're our Southfield daughter, just ripping it up there in Lansing. So we just want to say thank you. We're very proud of you. And you can come back and speak to this council anytime. We're always going to have open arms for you. And with that, maybe the council would like to say something to you to help encourage you throughout your work days. So I'll just run through council real quick and ask them to, you know, say congratulations or whatever to you if you have a moment. And I'll start with, okay, I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you very much. It was a very informative update, Representative Bolden. And I look forward to hearing from you, you know, every quarter. And thanks for everything that you do. We appreciate it in Southfield.
Yep, thank you. Councilman Brightwell.
I echo Mrs. Banks and Representative Bolden' intention to keep it a good work and keep us informed and keep an open ear to the city of Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz.
Yes, I just want to also thank state Representative Bolden for all of her hard work, working on behalf of the city of Southfield, and ultimately for everyone in the state of Michigan in some way as well. Congrats on your leadership appointments, as well as getting your third bill passed. So just congratulations and keep up the good work. And thank you for the update.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins.
Thank you. And you know, it's so funny, last week, I was just telling somebody how really, I'm so happy that Representative Bolden is our state representative in Lansing. She works so hard for our community, and I just want everybody in Southfield to know that we have great representation in Lansing. We have such hard workers. It's been an honor and a privilege to be able to work with her. And I'm glad that we'll be able to continue to work together on many other things in the future.
Thank you. Councilman Amanda Obama.
Yes, thank you. It's always nice to hear updates from our state rep. So thank you, Rep. Bolden, for coming and giving us some information and everything. I'm also glad to hear that you're on the Insurance Committee in the House. As I work for Blue Cross, I know that there's a lot of collaboration we do to try to help the residents of Michigan. So if there's anything I can do on my end, you know how to reach me, and I'm always willing to help. But thank you again for the updates.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Morris.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, state representative, for the update today. Congratulations on getting your third bill passed. Keep up the good work, and I look forward to participating in your COVID Town Hall in Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I was going to say, Mayor.
Representative Bolden, I am sort of astounded. We have $5 million coming from the federal government, and the Republicans only want to spend $2.5 billion. Isn't there a rationale for this? It just seems outrageous.
Yes, I agree with you. I don't know exactly what the tactic is there. But what I have heard was they don't believe that we need that much. And so we all know, if we don't use that money, we're going to lose it. It's going to go to a different state, and Michigan is a donor state to the federal government. And so what we're asking for and what we have been appropriated is our tax dollars to help us through this crisis. So I don't actually know what the rationale is, because I can't find one. But I will continue to fight for every single dollar to go to our communities and to our schools to make sure that we are being helped through this crisis.
So let me get this straight. It's not that they're just rejecting $2.5 billion? Or I thought, well, do they have other priorities to spend this money on? I mean, it does seem very strange to me, and I can understand why you voted against this.
So we cannot appropriate the money for any other purpose. This is specifically for COVID relief. And so, no, the money would not be going to the general fund, or to roads, or to any other project. If we do not use this money, we will lose it. And again, the rationale that at least I've heard was that they don't believe that we need that much money.
Well, they must be living in a, or blind to the fact that we have so many people that need grant assistance, people that need small businesses that need help. And then just getting the vaccine out is, should be a priority of everybody, including their health. All right, thank you. I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I'm just, I'm listening to you and thinking, this doesn't make sense. But thank you. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for your comments. Does anyone else on the call want to speak to our representative while we have her? Okay, hearing none. Again, I just want to say thank you to you, Representative Bolden, and thanks again for all you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much for having me.
First, next, we have Ms. Pat Wiley from the Southfield Youth Assistance with a brief presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and to our honorable mayor, Ken Seiver, Madam Clerk. And I'm going to go through a slide presentation. I think it's being uploaded now.
Wendell, can you go to the next slide for the PowerPoint?
Okay. And you know what? We actually have on this call the chair, one of our chairpersons for the Southfield Youth Assistance. And I'm going to turn this over to Kalatia Burton.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for having us. Just to give you, as she stated, my name is Kalatia Burton, and I'm this year's chair. I share this role with Angela Harvey, who I believe is also on the call. She's my co-chair. And we're just here today to give you a little bit of information about Southfield Youth Assistance, or SYA, as we call it. Where we have a board, an executive board, as well as a board that is comprised of about eight people. But we're a volunteer working board, so we're always looking for people to volunteer for various roles. But we'll leave our information here up on the screen, and it'll give you an information, some information about who we are, what we do, as well as contact information for you to reach out to us with any questions, or as well as, you know, if you decide or you know someone who is interested in volunteering as well. As I stated, I think my co-chair is on the call, but I'll turn it back over to Pat Wiley, so we can go through the slides just to give you some information.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, we are in partnership with the Oakland County Circuit Court, the Family Division, as well as the city of Southfield and Southfield Public Schools. Next slide, please. Southfield Youth Assistance's mission is to strengthen youth and family, and to reduce the incidence of delinquency, abuse, and neglect in our community. Next slide, please. This is the board. These are the tireless people that work with the Southfield Youth Assistance. Next slide, please. We partner with the community and we work together. And as Kalatia said, we are looking for new members. Hopefully, someone from the city council will check in just to see if they can be of immediate support to us as we support the Southfield Laker Village community. Next slide, please. This is what we do. We support and have a caseworker service for family assistance, short-term counseling. And we have a comprehensive system that we deliver plans and help to monitor what is happening to our young people and families that come to us. Next slide, please. The Youth Assistance Signature Programs are the Youth Rec program, where we honor and celebrate volunteerism through our young people. These are students who might not be your A or B students, but guess what? They deserve to have you put their arms around them and encourage them to keep moving forward. We also have our Skill Building Summer Camp program. And in that program, we partner with the city of Southfield, so that as parents come in and we can help fund them, we make sure that we guide them to the city's program for parks and recs. We have a Mentors Plus program, as well as a family education. Next slide, please. Most recent programs that we have been engaged in is a Backyard Bullying Kickoff program, and we partner with anybody we can in the city. And we are so grateful to have Hobby Town, one of the only toy stores in Southfield. They've partnered with us, and we had a wonderful time. The Lighthouse of Oakland County. We actually distributed 196 turkey baskets to adults, and we serviced 784 youth. We partnered with the Lighthouse for the Adopt a Family program, where we serviced 61 adults and 145 youth. We had a hygienist that we worked with that brought in over 100 toothbrushes, and we distributed those so that they too can make sure that they're keeping their hygiene up as much as possible. We actually purchased 57 Chromebooks to support Southfield Public School students, and we did that in partnership with the city of Southfield. So we connect with the city earlier last year, and we made sure that we had a presence there to support the city through the city police department and Haven Domestic Violent Prevention Walk. We partnered with the United Open Door of Hope Church, and we provided three students, along with the church, with $500 scholarships for our youth. We're here, we're in the city. We want parents and families to know that we are here to service them. Next slide, please. I'd like to introduce Dr. Vicki Golden to you. She is our family chair, and I'd like for her to talk about our new virtual program offerings that we have.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Pat. And it's just a pleasure to collaborate with you all, and thank you for the space that you're giving us to let you know how busy we are in taking care of the youth within the community. And so I want to talk a little bit about, real quickly, our virtual program offering. We have an offering of eight weeks that's for youth empowerment group, and that's in partnership with the Southfield Mental Health Associates. We also have CPA hands-only presentation in partnership with Inform Yourself Youth Development Company. For Black History Month, we have Zoom reading presentations in partnership with Youth Inform Yourself Youth Development Health Company and Community Students. And we also have Girls Blooming 2021 Symposium that's in partnership with Levy Cougars. Next slide, please. Southfield Youth Assistance really presents with the Mental Association the youth empowerment groups, and we work with topics like life skills, resiliency, shaping up your identity, and much more. And we also work with youth from the ages of 15 and 17. And on February 19th through April 9th, we'll have Zoom meetings. You can contact us, and we have our first participants that will be enrolled in an eight-week program, and it is received, they will receive a $15 Amazon card. So any questions, please give us a call. You can speak with our chair, or there's the numbers there that you can contact us, and we will be glad to work with you. Next slide, please. As we spoke, as I spoke earlier, we have Girls Blooming, and that's the 2021 Symposium. And we're actually going to be working with all of Levy's students, they're girls. And we have also invited their mothers. This program is really focused on helping the girls and the mothers. This theory is basically that the mothers are the first role models for girls. And so what we want to do is encourage mothers, give them some tools to actually support the girls and themselves. And then for the girls, we want to encourage them to further their education. We will be having Provost Fidelis from Wayne County Community College, and a couple more other speakers to talk about the value of education for the girls and the mothers, because Wayne Community College also provides adult education and skills enhancement for adults. So I'll turn it back over, and that's it. Do we have any question? Well, next slide, I'm sorry. We probably have some questions there. This is our contact information. And you can either go to our website, you can go to our Facebook, you can also email us, and here's our phone number. And you can text us, and we will be glad for you all to contact us. So we just want to give you an update on what we're doing, and thank you for this time.
Do we have any questions? Yeah, thank you very much. I'm going to, I want to say thank you for presenting tonight. It was a very nice presentation. The information is great, and we know that the children are our future. I will go through council and see if there's any questions or anything they would like to ask or say. I will start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
I have no questions. I appreciate your efforts and what you're doing for the kids in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Thank you for taking time to share with us today. Just one quick question, by way of your website, people able to make donations through the web if they wish to?
So very good question. If you could, if you would like to give us a call, we would make sure that you, that your donation went right into the correct area.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Hoskins.
Thank you. No questions for me, but I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the work you are doing for the residents of Southfield, and I hope you keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilman Amanda Obama.
Again, I just want to thank you for all the work you do. I know that there has been times where people have called me asking questions about programming or specific things about the youth assistance, and I've been able to help them by going to the website or calling the office for help, and everyone has been very helpful. And I appreciate everything in helping me help those who need the help. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris.
Yes, thank you so much for your presentation, sharing information about your organization. I appreciate all the work that you're doing. It's good to hear all the positive outcomes that you're accomplishing too. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks.
I call everything that my colleagues have said. Keep up the good work. And also, thank you for the end-of-the-year report that you sent to all the council members. It was very informative, and if we can ever do anything, just, you know where we're at, just reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor or anyone else on the call, would you like to, do you have any comments for the Southfield Youth Assistance?
Yes, this is Ken Seiver. I don't have a question. I want to give a testimonial. As a school administrator for many years in the Southfield Public Schools, I greatly appreciated the work that Southfield Youth Assistance did, particularly for those families that were struggling. And I cite a couple of examples. There were children that needed counseling due to family issues, issues the child was having, and the families couldn't afford a counselor or going to, for counseling. But I could refer them to Southfield Youth Assistance, and that really was a blessing. And the other thing was the scholarships for summer camp, again, for families in need, as well as summer school. Summer school tuition was paid by Southfield Youth Assistance for a number of children that, again, it was a struggle for the family to afford this support. So I greatly appreciate and value the contribution that Southfield Youth Assistance that Southfield Youth Assistance has made for many, many decades. Uh, thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes, uh-huh.
This is Administrator Zorn. I'd like to just also recognize the role that the Southfield Youth Assistance uh plays uh in the city. In particular, they are a sub-recipient of our uh Community Development Block Grant Program. It is an incredible relationship that we enjoy with them and their focus uh in allowing us to serve um the youth in our our community as as well, in particular relating to Community Development Block Grant, those youths who are disadvantaged uh coming from low to moderate income families. Uh, it's been a long-term uh relationship, started out with a very tense court order. Um, we're fortunate, though, the 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 focus and the evolution that the group has made, we're very fortunate. Uh, and I'll just cite, you know, the fifty-seven Chromebooks. That was money that we partnered with and used CARES money with as council approved. And uh that helped make uh technology accessible for uh, you know, fifty-seven additional people. So we we really appreciate the partnership and uh look forward to the uh continued uh relationship uh with the city and our Community Development Block Grant Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any closing remarks or anything from you, uh, anyone on the committee?
Yes, uh, this is Pat Wiley. Yes, I I really want to stress the fact that we have a caseworker uh that is paid for by the county because we get calls all the time from parents who need support. And our communities are really going through some challenging times, especially with our kids not being in school. So we wanted to make sure that you had this information again to share. We're introducing it to some, but some already know about the wonderful work and the connectiveness that we try to have with the schools and the city. And I just want to say thank you for everything that you help us do in reaching our youth and families. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to make a comment as well. I want to really thank uh the mayor and the dignitaries who always attend our youth recognition ceremony. And he always gives great, great comments and encouragement to the youth that's not of the norm, that really focus on them to uh stay focused and to do well. So we thank you for that, mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all again and uh thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for having us.
Mm-hmm. All right. So next we have a presentation, a joint presentation, a joint resolution, a presentation for the Black History Month. Uh, Mayor Cyver?
Yes, good evening again. Um, we presented this in draft form uh last uh meeting on on February first. And uh tonight, um, I will read the resolution uh as revised and ask uh the council um to uh approve the uh resolution declaring February first to twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one as Black History Month in the city of Southfield. Whereas National Black History Month, celebrated in February, has origins in nineteen fifteen, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson, historian and author, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. This organization is now known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. Whereas originally, Black History Month was a week in February that included the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African-Americans. In nineteen seventy-six, the week was expanded to a month-long celebration that honors the contributions and achievements that African-Americans have made to our nation's life and culture. And whereas in nineteen eighty-six, Congress passed Public Law Ninety-nine-two-forty-four, which designated February as National Black History Month. And President Ronald Reagan issued a proclamation calling upon all Americans to observe Black History Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Whereas respectively, every president since has issued a proclamation encouraging all citizens to recognize the importance of this month. And whereas the theme for the Twenty Twenty-One Black History Month is Black Family Representation, Identity and Diversity, to explore African diaspora and the spread of black families across the United States. And whereas the city of Southfield will host or is hosting a number of activities to observe Black History Month, and all residents are welcome to participate in the activities planned by the Parks and Recreation Department, including uh Moonlight, a movie night, and the the movie is Just Mercy, Virtual Society Storytellers, and Take a Walk Through History, which is the uh signs, the placards that line the front lawn, or uh purchase a Black History T-shirt. Additionally, the Southfield Public Library is hosting a number of events uh and a conversation uh and greeting with Rochelle Riley that happened today at noon. Um, the city of Southfield will host a three-month display in the municipal building lobby of African-American artwork depicting scenes from black history. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Southfield, City Council, and I, Mayor Ken Syber, Mayor of the city of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim February first to twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one as Black History Month in the city of Southfield and ask everyone to join us in honoring the contributions and achievements of African-Americans and recognizing their central role in U.S. history. Stayed this first day of February twenty-twenty-one or actually uh today, February eighth. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Council, may I have a uh?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the joint resolution on Black History Month.
Support.
It's been motioned by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for us to approve the resolution for Black History Month. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Black History Month Joint Resolution has been approved?
Thank you.
Uh, if I could just interject one other thing?
Sure.
Um, the placards that are out front are are really uh very well done. And they um, with COVID, this is an activity that uh uh folks and families can do. Walk around, uh, I know it's terribly cold, but uh it's still something that um I would invite people to do. It's quite enlightening. And then uh today I had the uh opportunity to tune into Rochelle Riley's um uh book talk and conversation, which um by the way will be um, was recorded and will be replayed. It'll be available on the uh the website. Um, um Rochelle, uh, many of you know is um a journalist, she's a columnist and she uh for Detroit Free Press as well as um the cultural and community affairs um director for the city of Detroit. Uh, her new book is That They Lived: African-Americans Who Changed the World. And it's a a pictorial book. And the thing that's really special about this is it talks about people like Jackie Robinson, but it it's um geared particularly to young people because it, not only does it talk about uh each person in African-American history, their contributions, but it talks about them as a young person. Uh, so the approach of this book is um uh different and it's uh designed for young people to see that these names in in African-American history are actually um, they were children once, uh, they were young once. And um uh, so it's a very relatable um book. Again, That They Lived: African-Americans Who Changed the World. And um this uh conversation that was held today at noon uh again was taped and will be available um through the library's website. Thank you for letting me add that.
You're welcome. Um, our next is appointments, mayor, and that's the appointment of Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness for Justin Beck.
Yes, um, uh, as you know, um, in my cover letter to council, we um, uh, the emergency management um uh position, homeland security position, uh, has been a sort of a half-time position. Uh, the former um uh person in this job worked half-time in the fire department, half-time in emergency management. Uh, things are different today and um we um had had Justin Beck, uh, who has all the backgrounds, you should have received his resume uh in emergency preparedness, um, was working half-time in public works and uh half-time in the uh Emergency Management Center. Uh, with COVID, he's not been able to do really anything uh in public works. And so uh at your meeting uh last week, you approved uh funding for this position to be a full-time position. And so I'm asking tonight uh for council to approve the full-time appointment of Justin Beck as our Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, may I entertain the motion?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Justin Beck to be the Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness as presented in the documentation.
Um, I, Councilwoman Banks, I have a question.
Okay.
Before we vote, so I don't know if it's now or you want to first second it?
Uh, I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, madam clerk. We would need the second and then we open for questions.
Correct. Thank you.
So are you gonna?
I'll second that.
And that is Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's been motioned by uh Councilman Brightwell and seconded by Councilman Mandelbaum for us to approve the appointment of Homeland Security and Prepared, Emergency Preparedness. But before we take the vote, we have a question?
Um, yes. Wait, am I on? Yeah, um, yeah, thank you. Um, I don't remember and I do not see what the um salary range will be for this position. I thought when we approved it last week that um we were gonna come back and that was gonna be presented to us and I don't see it here. Am I missing something? We're appointing, we're appointing him as the Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, but at what salary range?
I'm gonna ask uh Administrator Zorn uh to speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, the salary would be at his present salary. I do not have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
Um, that was gonna be my answer too. Uh, I don't, it's not a change in salary, uh, it's it's actually a change in budget. And you approved the CARES Act uh last week to cover the other half because his salary was being paid out of uh, half out of public works and half out of what was budgeted for um emergency preparedness. So it's no change in salary?
And and I think Justin's extremely deserving of this, but I don't, I have no idea what his salary is. So just trying to figure out in the chart where he would fall.
Well, we can provide that information. I'm sorry I didn't um uh predict that question would come up. Uh, it's not a raise, uh, it's just a change in budget, uh, how we're covering uh the cost.
So would somebody provide that information to the council?
Yes, Madam President. And I I want to just indicate also that be careful when looking at ranges because his bargaining group is the Ask Me Supervisors. And sometimes there are are minor differences when you look at those ranges. That range is not the same as the management range. Um, you know, for example, when the last uh Homeland Security, he was within the fire department and that salary was pretty much established by his salary within the fire department. We will get his current salary um a- as as well as the information from that, the appropriate collective bargaining agreement.
But, okay, so is he, I guess I'm confused. He's no longer gonna be in the union, is that correct? He's gonna be the director?
He, this-
He's not gonna be a director?
But he's not, he's not a management position. I I would, I would need to sit meet with HR on this. But it would be the same as Bill Johns. Bill Johns was not in the management group. He retired from the fire department.
Well, and and I guess I thought we were gonna make this a management position because prior to Bill Johns, if my memory is correct, Frank Coots, he was part of the management team. I don't know, someone correct me if I'm wrong, please.
We'd need to check, Madam President.
So should we, should we table this until we get the information that you're looking for?
It's the mayor's appointment, Madam President.
Okay, well, we will, we we can, we can table it. Can you have this by the next meeting?
Uh, we could do it by the twenty-fifth. Uh, he'll continue to doing what he's doing. It's not uh like we don't have coverage. Um, I I apologize, I didn't anticipate that um his salary would be a uh uh um, an issue because it wasn't changing. But um also, um, if my memory serves me correct, uh Frank Coots was in the position prior to Bill Johns and Frank uh had retired. Uh, so he was um a non-contractual, if I remember correctly, uh, doing this uh, uh, this job.
Okay.
There is a motion on the floor. If you want to move ahead with the motion, I will get you the salary information in an email this week.
Well, I guess a bigger question I have right now is um to the mayor, or to Mr. Zorn. Um, and I thought we talked about this a few weeks ago. Um, when we discussed, you know, with his appointment, we said, well, could he go back to his old position? And I just thought at that time that we were taking him out of the union. So it sounds like he's staying in the union?
Madam President, that question has been raised to the uh, I've asked HR to raise that question to the collective bargaining group. Uh, you know, what happens if a a new mayor comes in and they wish to appoint someone else in that position? Uh, at this time, I do not know the answer to that question. Um, you know, it's the tip, type of thing that we would come to a memorandum of understanding within the collective bargaining a- agreement. Um, and and again, I don't know if HR's had a chance to raise that that question or if it's been resolved at this point.
Well, I guess I'd like to make a motion then that we postpone this to um a later date because I I would feel more comfortable knowing that answer. I think Justin is highly qualified and deserving, but I just want to make sure that he's being treated fair and equal. If he is a director, is he in the union or isn't he in the union?
Well, first, well, first, we have a motion on the floor. We have to go through that. And then I can, depending on the outcome of that, we can, you know, take a second motion. But uh, council, we do have a motion on the floor for the approval of the appointment of Justin Beck to the Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. You've heard the questions that have been raised. So this will be a yes or a no vote. Uh, and madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Taylor?
No.
Cruz?
No.
Banks?
No.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Uh, the motion fails because it's not four votes.
And if, is, I, I don't know if, if, if Morris is having technical difficulties, because she couldn't, I could not, I didn't hear anything from her.
I can bring this back on the 25th with questions answered.
22nd.
Or it's the 25th?
February 22nd would be the next.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Brightwell?
I, the handling of personnel is one of the biggest decisions that any organization can make. And the information about those personnel is some of the most definable items that any organization can make. So I just, what we just went through is, uh, compounded, and it just, um, I, I, I'm, I would just hate for any young intern to have just listened to what I just listened to. And with respect to the amount of money, who, who, what organization be along to, that was one of the more, so I, I would, I would just hope in the future that when we are making these personnel appointments, we have as concrete information as we possibly can. I'm not trying to grandstand or say anything, but that was just the most confusing thing I think I heard in my professional life in dealing with management and everything. So I just implore anybody who's involved in this just to, you know, just lock down the, the basic questions that deal with personnel in, in the city of Southfield. Thank you. I, I hate I have to say that, but it was just, it just making me rock and back and forth and I'm cheer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brightwell. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have the approval of two sets of minutes. We have minutes from the regular meeting of January 19th and the regular meeting of January 25th of 2021.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes, the regular meeting minutes of January 19, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of January 25, 2021.
Support. Councilman Cruz.
Okay. It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of our regular minutes of January 19th, 2021, and our regular minutes of January 25th, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Minutes approved for January 19th and 25th of 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have the consent agenda. Items A through E. Council?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell again.
Yes.
I can make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented.
Support. Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of consent agenda items A through E. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morris? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Councilwoman, Morris is saying she's speaking, but we can't hear her, so we have some technical difficulties. I just wanted the audience to know that.
Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight. Nor do we have any site plans. I'm sorry. Was someone gonna say something?
They certainly can't hear me.
I see, Morris, we can hear you now. We can hear you now.
Oh, you can hear me? Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we have some technical difficulties.
All right. To, Madam President, I just, I don't know if it's possible to go back to the agenda item related to Justin Beck, but I, I did vote yes on that, but you couldn't hear me.
Okay. I don't know, in this situation, I would need direction.
Okay.
Because we, I don't know if we could go back and redo that now. We've already agreed to, uh, have it presented on the 22nd with additional information.
Well, I, I would get with the attorney offline while we continue with the meeting. Because what is a technical difficulty? Because if she did vote yes, then that motion would have passed as presented. So I will get, I'll get with the attorney, and we'll come back with you before the end of the meeting in regards to that.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we are at our communications piece. And before we start, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum, would you please do, be our timekeeper tonight?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. This is the time for communications. If there's anyone on the call that would like to speak to this Council, would you please unmute your line, and we'll be able to speak for three minutes?
Madam President, I did unmute the lines for communication.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Madam President, tonight, I wish to talk about Section 11.18. 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. Section 11.18 is entitled amendments, which describes how this council may, if it wishes, amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy-two-step Michigan state law, known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of 1909, thus making Section 11.18 null and void. Yes, you heard me right. Section 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter does not conform with Michigan state law. In fact, 11.18 has never, ever conformed with Michigan state law, period. 11.18 became null and void way back in 1958, when the Southfield founding fathers attempted to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the initial Southfield City Charter. That's when the nine-member City Charter Commission mistakenly deleted the second step in a two-step process. State law mandates yesterday and today that it takes two, two mandatory steps to amend the Southfield City Charter. State mandatory step number one, the Southfield City Council, that's you folks, must first of all pass a proposed charter amendment, and then the next step, state mandatory step number two, the Southfield voters, that's us folks, must pass by ballot election Council's proposed charter amendment. Unfortunately, 11.18 totally deletes state mandatory step number two, the ballot election. In a word, after 63 years, it's about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do yourself a felicitous favor and fix Section 11.18. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4803, I'm sorry, 48037-0155. You know, I just wanted to know if we could have a moment of silence for our very own Charles McGee. He died three days ago on February 5th at the age of 96. So if we could just pause for a few seconds, I would appreciate that. For those of you that are not familiar with Mr. Charles McGee in 1969, he was one of the first artists, black artists, to organize the Seven Black Artists, which was the all-black group, and he did that at the Detroit Artist Market. And he also was the co-founder of Galli, Gallery Seven. Another very important fact on today, since Mayor Seiver was introducing Black History Month and the resolution, which I'm very pleased with. Today, in 1944, Henry S. McAlfen was the first African-American to be accredited to attend a White House press conference. And it was for the presidential press conference. He was respectfully greeted by former President Franklin D. Roosevelt. But even though he was the first to do that and make history, he could not get a congressional press, press pass. So I just thought that that was very significant considering what we're going through with our democracy. And the last thing I wanted to say, it was mentioned earlier about the, the state only giving, the government only giving the state of Michigan $2.5 billion. Now, we pay a lot of money for lobbyists, and the role of a lobbyist is to go and advocate on behalf of our city. So if we're only able to get $2.5 billion, I would like to be assured that for that expensive contract that we renew every three years, that they can go and get the other $2.5 billion. And maybe we might need to start finding some volunteers in the community that don't have to be paid or given a contract that, you know, have a very special skill set that they could maybe use to do some of those things. But we really need to get the rest of that money, and I'd like to impress upon all the members of Council to reach out to the lobbyists that we pay so much money for. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time by asking, Madam President, would you consider moving communications further up on the agenda? You can make that decision.
Thank you, Ms. Gerald. And just so you know, we have had many discussions about communications and where to place it on the agenda. So we're still in conversations. But thank you. Is there anyone else on the line?
Madam President, we do have another person who has their hand raised to speak.
Okay.
They can speak now.
Good evening, Madam President and Councilmembers. My name is Carla Shade, and I live at 29242 Wildbrook Drive. I would like to address the Council and request assistance and resolve regarding a longstanding trash disposal issue for the residents of Wildbrook Drive's private drive. The waste management trucks do not service the private drive, most likely due to the Franklin River Bridge weight constraints, and therefore, there is no formal trash pickup or designated location in place for these residents. While my household has never placed trash on that drive, my neighbors and I continually receive multiple letters from the Code Enforcement Division indicating code violation notices, possible tax liens on our properties, or trash that has been placed there for trash day pickup. One of my neighbors, who is physically disabled, was able to secure trash pickup assistance from the city of Southfield from a WEP company that sends a pickup truck to their home, but this company has not contracted to service the other five homes on the private drive. While I cannot speak to what was in place prior to me moving here three years ago, I can only assume that this has been an unrectified issue since the first home was built on this drive in the 60s. With that, I humbly ask that the city partner with the taxpaying residents of the private drive and help us come up with a solution that will work for all. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. I will ask our city administrator to direct this to, I guess, DPW? Would that be Larry Searls?
Yeah, that is correct, Madam Chair, and I, I've noted it here in code and private, Wildwood Private Drive, as well as an individual who we're contracting for to be picked up. I can speculate, but I'd rather do a little research first.
Thank you, yes. Just, uh, and notify the resident when, when, with whatever we find out.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam President, I do think that that concludes our communication portion of the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move to the council portion. Council, I'll just go around and you can have, say what's on your heart and in your mind. I'll start with you, Councilman Cruz.
Madam President, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. I have, uh, nothing, uh, beyond what I've been saying for a while, just making sure everyone, please stay safe, if you can, or if you're comfortable, uh, reach out to your medical providers or reach out to Oakland County about signing up for a vaccine, so we can, uh, hopefully, send the tide of this COVID pandemic that we're dealing with. I'm just hoping everybody is still continuing to wear their mask, saying they're six feet away, if they can't, not going out, if they don't have to. We're just, we're at the end of the tunnel here. If you see in the light at the end of the tunnel, we're almost there. We just gotta do our part to make sure we're all staying safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, I'm gonna echo what Councilman Hoskins just said. But also, I want to add that there's a lot of things going on this month, as was mentioned earlier, as it relates to Black History Month, but also, our Parks and Rec Department has every Saturday walking tours, and they go to different parks. But this Saturday, February 13th, they will actually be in Beachwoods by the golf course, and it's going to be about a one-hour, I'm sorry, it's gonna be about a one-mile guided walk through that golf course and that area. There will be meeting at the Beachwoods Pro Shop at 10:00 a.m. And they just want you to register, so they know how many people they, they expect. You can do that through Parks and Rec, 248-796-4620. And again, every Saturday, they always go to a, a different park in the city, a different area, and just walk around and explore the, the beauty and nature within the city. So just wanted to make sure everyone knows they can do that and get some fresh air. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Nothing for me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. I would like to, um, to thank the city for establishing a call-in number for residents experiencing difficulty trying to obtain their COVID vaccine. The COVID vaccination hotline number is 248-796-4529. The line is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If you do call and they are busy and they cannot answer your call, please speak clear and leave your name and telephone number, and someone will get back with you, I believe, within 24 hours. Just a reminder that you can register at the hospital that your doctor is affiliated with. Meyer Pharmacy is now is now vaccinating individuals. And there's also a lot of information on the city website if you have a chance to visit. Also, February is National Heart Month. Also, February is National Heart Month. During these challenging times, it's extremely important for everyone to continue with your yearly physical examinations. It's better to be proactive than reactive, and we need to take care of our body, health, and mind in order to get through this pandemic and stay healthy. And then I do concur with everything else that my colleagues have said. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, well, COVID is a fine incentive tonight on everyone's tongue, and also on mine with respect to veterans. And as usual, if you know a veteran, just pass this information on. But the VA in downtown Detroit and also in Ann Arbor, they are currently making appointments for veterans to get the COVID shot, Pfizer 1 and 2, obviously you had to get one first. So if you know of a veteran and/or if you are a veteran, please pass on the information that the veteran should get in touch with their primary care doctor with the VA to schedule your COVID test. And they are, I happened to read in the publications, the VA nationwide is really stepping up and making the great strides in vaccinating veterans. So I echo all the other words mentioned by my colleagues with respect to your health, and stay safe. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I too want to echo all that my council members have already stated, and I won't repeat those in regards to COVID and the hotline. And I want to say thank you to the administrative team who worked to put that together and for Human Services, who's volunteering their time to man that hotline. That's very important when it comes to COVID. And also that, just as we've already been speaking of all this evening, that this is our Black History Month. And I just wanted to bring to the attention to and to encourage everyone to view the displays and presentations that are happening in and around the city, as had been mentioned. Southfield is known for their great efforts that we've taken to tell our stories of the African-American leaders and pioneers who shoulders we stand on. And keeping this tradition alive while keeping the city safe during this pandemic is deeply important to me. As we remember and celebrate our Black History, let us take the opportunity to acknowledge history that is being made with the election of Kamala Harris. She is the first black female, the first woman of South Asian descent, as well as being the first woman to be elected to the Vice President of the United States. Now more than ever, we need to remember the lessons and the long-lasting experiences of those who came before us. For example, some of the things that, did you know that Sarah Boone was a black woman who invented the earning board? John Moutslinger was a black man who invented the shoe, the shoe machine. We had Walter Salmons, who invented the comb. We had Lloyd Ray, who invented the dustpan. And it goes on and on and on. So now more than ever, we need to remember the lessons and the long-lasting experiences of those who came before us. So I'm encouraging everyone this February to read or learn about someone or something related to Black History that you didn't know before. And then to share that with whatever you find, just share that with others. And this will help to keep our Black History alive here in the city of Southfield. So thank you. Next, we have the mayor's portion.
Yes, good evening once again. Councilwoman Banks has said regarding our assistance, the city is providing to those who do not have internet access or smartphone or a computer. We do, again, the hotline number is 248-796-4529. I also want to mention that people can use the Nurse on Call number for Oakland County, which is 800-848-5533. And you can go to the Oakland County website at oakgov.com. On the front page is COVID. Click on that, and there are the prompts to get registered. The city is also taking the steps of putting an ad in the Southfield Sun. We've reviewed the ad today. It's ready to be placed, explaining how to get registered for vaccination. And this afternoon, and thanks to Lisa Hawkins, I recorded a PSA with this very same information that'll go on our Cable 15 channel as well as YouTube. On a final note, we just want to repeat that we are doing vaccinations. When I say "we," it's we're assisting, but we're not in control of it. Oakland County is actually administering the vaccinations in the Southfield Pavilion on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays from 9 until about 6:30. People cannot just show up. You need to have an appointment and a appointment number, as well as photo ID to get your shot. They're doing approximately 1,100 people daily. And we are, again, not, we have no control over this. We're just lending the space. Also remind people to go to the rear doors of the Pavilion. That would be the east doors between the 46th District Court and the police station. We have people trying to get in other doors that are closed. So it's the back doors of the Southfield Pavilion. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, and it's also COVID-related, I was notified by Oakland County that there are grants available to veterans for emergency financial relief. And it's up to $2,500. And those eligible would be those under an honorable or general discharge from the United States Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and Air Force, National Guard Reserves, and women's auxiliaries. And you have to be a resident of Oakland County. And the grant maximum, $2,500, with food assistance, $150. And this can be used for utilities, water bills, and property tax. Again, if you go to the Oakland County website, oakgov.com, you can find information on this. Or call 248-858-0785. Again, that's 248-858-0785. And of course, there are documentation of need and as well as family income. Our rules apply. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Madam President. Want to let people know that, as the mayor has indicated, we will be running an advertisement in the Sun. It's a pretty robust ad focused primarily in educating people as to where they can get their vaccine. In the last week, we continue to update the city's website regarding COVID. In particular, we've added other service providers in Oakland County. As the mayor has indicated, the city is facilitating the hosting of Oakland County, offering vaccines three days a week. You must be registered with the Oakland County Health Department in order to take advantage of that. We're also still doing testing on Thursdays. It's been moved from Wednesdays till Thursday. And again, you must register with the Oakland County Health Department. That information can be found on the city's website. In addition to that ad, we're also promoting the city's COVID vaccine hotline. There, we are registering people primarily to the Oakland County website, but we'll do our best to help to navigate people to other service providers. And last week, the county hit the 20,000 marks, a number of people vaccinated. There are the numbers being, people being vaccinated by these other service providers are also large numbers, and much larger than the county in some cases. The, in honor of Black Awareness Month, I encourage people to look at the city's Parks and Rec page. There are a number of events happening. It's been mentioned earlier, the front lawn is, it is cold out, but it's a very educational walk to read the placards that are, that go around the circle. That's all I have this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Our city attorney?
Yes, good evening, Madam President. This is Dawn. Good evening, Honorable Body and Mayor. The only thing I had tonight was a new case, and this is just for information purposes only. There's no other information except that it has now been assigned to the Michigan Municipal Risk Authority. And so if any important updates come again, then I will be in a closed session or if any council member wants to contact me.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if I may, Madam President, I want to address the issue about Councilwoman Morris's vote that was not able to be taken. Technical difficulty. So I have been researching and looking into this to make sure I have the right answer with Madam Clerk. So initially, I thought she would be able to do a motion to reconsider the vote that was taken. And in that scenario, it did say that she could have brought the motion, but she would have had to vote. So as I continue to look at it, there is updated version of Robert's Rules of Order for electronic meetings. And in that case, unfortunately, with everything the way it is with technology, they're still very strict and said that it is the individual member's responsibility to make sure the technical malfunctions or other things such as that are in order. So therefore, the vote can, the motion cannot be brought back, reconsidered for those two reasons. One, she would have had to have voted in the original motion. And two, under the electronic Robert Rules of Order, it is saying that an individual cannot make that motion reconsider based on the technical issue.
Thank you for that research.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. No comment this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Our treasurer?
Good evening, Honorable Body. I just wanted to let the viewing, listening audience be aware that the winter tax deadline is coming up shortly. It's going to be February 16th this year. And payments can be made either electronically. The site, the direct area to go to is taxes.cityofsouthfield, or one word, dot com, taxes.cityofsouthfield.com. Or they can utilize the 24-hour Dropbox outside of City Hall, outside of the municipal complex. And they can put a tax payment with a check in that Dropbox. Or if they need, if they have any questions or any special appointment necessary, can be arranged by calling area code 248-796-5200 and extension 2. And they should be able to speak to one of the staff members and be able to coordinate, get any information that they need that's not available online. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Planner?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to remind the audience that we're on our second week of public input for the Sustainable Southfield Master Plan Update. Week two, questions 2A is capital improvements and roads. And question 2B is non-motorized transit and pedestrian amenities. You can go on the city's website, Planning Department homepage, or you can type in publicinput, one word, dot com backslash sustainable southfield 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Our city assessor?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
I want to thank Planner Crowe for updating his planning commission annual report. As I mentioned before, I like reading. And I see that you did put dates on the one that was submitted, the final copy there. You put dates and also date ranges. I really appreciate that, and thank you for being extremely responsive. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. City assessor? Our city engineer? Okay, hearing none. Well, there's nothing to schedule. Counsel, we have one ordinance to enact.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we enact ordinance number 1732.
Support, or Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to enact ordinance 1732 for PZR 20-0005, the rezoning request of Ari Liverwood's 29355 Northwestern Highway LLC to rezoning 5.094 acres of land from R2 Single Family Residential and P Vehicular Parking to B3 General Business and P Vehicular Parking. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
The enactment of ordinance 1732 is adopted. Madam President, just for clarification, when the honorable body does make a motion for the closed session, we do need to make sure that we are mentioning both items that we are going into closed session this evening for. My staff should have sent that additional information to council for their consumption earlier today.
Thank you. Yes. Counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make a motion that we go into a closed session for two discussion points. One is for the discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute for a legal written opinion for an EEOC complaint, and a discussion of a legal opinion of William E. Booth &amp; Company Realtors versus the city of Southfield, Trowbridge.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to go into closed session for the two aforementioned items. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Morris? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz? Cruz?
Okay, motion to go into closed session. Madam President, could you give us about two minutes to get this ready?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll now go into closed session.